We're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
The meeting to order. This is the Exeter zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for March. And I'm going to begin by introducing the members of the board that are with us this evening. To my far left, Chris Merrill, alternate member; Martha Pennell, alternate member; Lori Davies, full member; to my right, Rick Thielbar, full member; and S.R. Olson Murphy, clerk. My name's Bob Pryor. I'm the vice chair, sitting in for Mr. Baum, who is the chair, and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening, much to your agreement, I'm sure. So we have two matters before us, two applications this evening. I want to clarify that the voting members would be Mr. Thielbar, Ms. Olson Murphy, myself, and Ms. Davies. We have two cases before us this evening. Would you like to alternate? Do you have preferences, Martha, Chris?
Nope.
Martha, do you have a preference on which one you'd like to sit on as the senior member of the board?
Either one. The first one would...
Okay. All of the members will participate in the discussion, however, Ms. Pennell will be the voting, fifth voting member on the first application, and Mr. Merrill will be the voting member on the second application. Without further ado, the application of Gateway at Exeter LLC for a variance per Article 4, Section 4.2 Schedule I, permitted uses, and Section 4.3 Schedule II, Density and Dimensional Regulations Residential, to permit a multifamily residential development on property located on Epping Road. The subject property is located in the C3 Epping Road Highway Commercial Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel #47-7. This is case number 22-4. Is the applicant with us this evening? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Jay Leonard. I'm a lawyer within Nashua, and I'm here with Tom Monahan, who's the principal for the applicant Gateway at Exeter LLC.
Okay.
So first, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just want to make sure that I see what you all received as part of my package. So there should be an application with a narrative and a subdivision plan that was approved by the planning board, the former approval by the zoning board, and the minutes of that meeting.
From 2019?
Yes, from May 21, 19.
Mm-hmm.
And then there should also be the letter from the planning board with the approval of the site plan and subdivision.
Yep.
And then I just put in some draft workforce housing restrictive covenants for discussion, if anybody had any in particular. And then last was the site plan, which was part, was approved by the planning board, showing the site.
Yep.
So I think that's, that's part of the application, and my understanding is that everybody's had a chance to see it. You probably don't want to hear me go through it in detail, but I'm certainly willing to and open to that.
I don't know about detail, Mr. Leonard, but I think the one thing that we would appreciate is an explanation of the, of changes that have taken place since the approval by this board in 2019.
Okay.
Or at least a, an inclusion of that in whatever presentation you have.
All right. So yes, I understand what you're asking for, and we can certainly take care of that. So just as a preliminary matter, I'm here with Mr. Monahan. I think everybody's aware of where the property is and all. Is this working fine?
It's not for this room, it's for the broadcast.
Oh, okay.
For your at-home audience.
All right. So I'm here basically to straighten out a concern regarding a condition of a prior variance. And we are looking to confirm the variance of May 19, I believe, May 21, 2020, and clarify issues regarding a condition. To be specific, the hearing that we had in May, we made presentations, conceptual presentations regarding what was going to be put on the property. And the request at that time, just as it is today, was for a variance to allow residential in a commercial zone. Of course, at that time, it was all preliminary and conceptual. We discussed the plan pretty specifically as regards the residential, but we also referred to it as a mixed-use project because the project involved a second lot that was going to be developed as a commercial property. And along the way, that became an issue. So I'm here today to clear that up. Now with regard to the changes that we're talking about, this all comes up as... Sure, step right up here. This all arises because we, once we got the approval in 2019, we immediately began the engineering process, et cetera, went to the planning board, went through that whole process, and actually got an approval. And the approval, you see, there's a copy in there with the conditions, et cetera. We, and that was 2000, that was August and September of 2020. Since that time, we've worked very hard to get financing to construct this property, and to no avail. So what we did after that was we explored different ways to deal with how the variance had been interpreted. And I say that in hindsight because while we were going through this process, there was no real formal interpretation, if you will. But what we did was a number of different things. The short story is in December of 2021, that being just a couple of months ago, we initiated a process through Mr. Sharples in the planning office, where we proposed or began the discussion of a plan that would show just the residential part of the project, and it would leave out the commercial part of the project. And I'll give you details on why, but basically, that's what the new plan that we were going to propose in December was showing. As a, as a result of that, there was some discussion with the planning office and then the zoning office. The short story being that Mr. Eastman, after consulting with the planning office and Mr. Sharples, and also, I believe, Town Council, was concerned that the hearing of May 2019, we made representations that it was a mixed-use proposal and that the mixed use was a condition of the ZBA approval. So having heard that, we made the application here. And as I say, the purpose of this is really directed at that one condition. The condition that the commercial property has to be built at the same time as the residential property. It's our view that, well, we actually think that was not an initial part of the ZBA, but we, it never really came up until, well, it's been coming up over time, but it came to a head in December when we asked for a specific new plan, if you will. So that's the issue. That's the, really, the only focus. Now, in direct response to your question, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure that we actually need change of, of anything, really. The courts have said that you can modify a zoning, a variance, and modify conditions as they relate. And I think that's especially true here, when if that was a condition, I'm going to suggest that it wasn't one that was, everybody understood. But even if it was a condition, it wasn't really directly related to the actual variance granted. In other words, the requirement of a mixed-use commercial building being built at the same time as a residential complex doesn't really accomplish any zoning purpose, or it doesn't protect neighboring properties. It doesn't really relate to the variance of, a use variance for residential. But aside from that, there have been changes in circumstances. There certainly is a change in circumstance in that we want to build just the residential component, so the plan itself is different. We don't want to build the commercial property right now. Now, let me be very clear. We fully intend that the, so right now, the property is, it used to be, when we first came here in May, it was approximately 60 acres. And we discussed, it had not been subdivided as yet. So we talked about a commercial property being in the front portion, and then the residential property being limited to about 15 or so acres in the front, and then the rear portion being donated to the town or somehow or other restricted. At this point in time, we're more specific because we do have a subdivision. So I can tell you that the, there are now three lots. The front, so let me think here. If I stand on the street and look to the left is the commercial property, and that's about two, a little over two acres. Immediately on the right, and then behind the commercial property, is approximately, I think it's 14 acres. That is the residential component, where the, where the multifamily rental project will be. And then to the rear is 14.2 acres, which is still proposed to be dedicated to the town. So the plan now is very clear that we aren't going to build the commercial property now. We're very willing to commit to that property remaining a commercial effort, but of course, it's already zoned commercial, so we would have to come back to you now anyway. So there's really no reason to even talk about that piece, and that's why we were confused in the beginning. We always understood we were coming for a residential variance.
Before we move on from the lot line adjustments that have taken place, the application that was presented, which I do not have a copy of from 2019, I'm sure it's buried in my basement somewhere, was approximately 60 acres. What's happened to the rest of it?
I think you...
So it's exactly, so with regard to the application itself, it's really the same, except that we aren't even talking about the commercial property. We, that lot, which is a little over two acres, will remain zoned commercial. We actually are going to have cross easements for parking and, and all. As we discussed in the original hearing, that will remain, those same parking spaces...
Single curb cut, single access off of that?
All of that, yes.
Okay.
That remains, but the building itself is not committed. And so that brings up the change in circumstances that I think, in terms of the plan, that's the change, but in terms of facts and circumstances around the property, there have been changes as well. And one of them is, is exactly what we're talking about here. When we first came in, Mr. Monahan felt very comfortable that he had a tenant. We were talking in some detail with a tenant to occupy the property as a daycare and early childhood.
Gosh, nothing in the world has changed since May of 2019. I can't imagine.
That's exactly right. So, and it's interesting that it all happened at this exact time. So we had a tenant. The pandemic hit. The pandemic hit before our first meeting with the planning board, but after the zoning variance. We lost the tenant. We have tried extensive effort, marketing the project as a whole. It's simply impossible under these present circumstances. So, and I, I think I probably don't have to say, but let me simply say for the record, there's been an extreme change in the demand for a commercial property, and there's been an extreme change for demand for rental property.
Yep.
Rental homes. So those are the circumstances that have changed in terms of things outside of the plan itself.
Okay.
I, I think it is worth, if you don't mind me, just stating for the record, that the facts that supported the variance, for example, the location of the property, the conditions of the property, all of those facts remain exactly the same. So all of the facts that support the earlier variance, in fact, continue to support the earlier variance, and there is no change that I'm aware of that would in any, in any way affect that conclusion that you made earlier. So I don't think there are any changes in that regard, but there are changes with regard to the things I mentioned.
Okay.
So, and actually, there's one other thing that's going on here, of course, the passage of time. And we want to make sure, so now we're at a point where...
Yeah, you're coming up on your three years. You need an extension.
Well, and yes. And what we have come to learn, and we now kind of understand this in detail, that Mr. Monahan can get and will get financing to build the 224 units. And by the way, I, I don't think I need to restate, but let me assure you that the project is exactly the same with regard to the residential as we proposed in the beginning. So what I mean by that, just again, to put it on the record, there's 224 rental units. 25% of those are dedicated to workforce housing, as defined by the state of New Hampshire. Of those 25%, that's a total of 56, I believe, 28 will be one-bedroom, 29, 28 will be two-bedroom. When we first, and I, and I don't mean to, well, let me say, that continues to be true. We continue to commit to you that these are rental properties, they will not be sold, and they will remain rental properties for 30 years. What workforce housing means in a rental context is that these will be affordable to folks and families who have 60% of the median income. So it's not similar to purchases where it's the median income. This is 60% of the median income. The other thing that is a little bit interesting, and I want to just confirm that we continue to follow this rule, affordable means no more than 30% of a family's income. And that's the rent plus the utilities. Utilities are included. We continue to follow that. That is the state definition, and that's what we represented to you in the beginning. And that was actually a condition of the approval, but all those conditions continue and remain, and we understand that.
Okay.
So that's kind of how we got here. Those are the changes in the plan and the changes in the circumstances. What's the problem? I've hinted at it. The problem is financing. So the best financing that is available for workforce housing now is financing that's supported by bonding and governmental funds and programs, most notably New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority. And short story is, they only finance residential properties. So how does that matter? Well, when the planning board approved this, they put a, put a condition in that would tie the commercial property to construction and occupant, occupancy of the residential property. When you're a bonding company and New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, they don't like that connection at all, and they won't accept it. It's not acceptable.
But that's a planning board condition, not a zoning board?
That's a planning board condition.
Okay.
I'm, yeah, that's a planning board condition. And I don't think this board needs to worry about that condition at all.
You may need to, but we don't.
That's right.
Right.
We've actually been told that, well, I won't go there.
Let's not go there.
Yeah.
So let me ask you a few questions.
Please.
If I may. I'm, I've been staring at during our conversation, the letter May 22, 2019, signed by my colleague, who was chair at the time. And it is ambiguous, I will grant you that, as far as the connection is concerned. It says that we grant permission for a multifamily residential complex as part of a mixed-use development plan within the area shown on the site, on the display plan submitted and with the application as presented. That's a little ambiguous, as part of. I'm certainly comfortable with clarifying that. There are five stated conditions. The fact that this as part of is not a condition, but it is a statement within the notification itself. So I just want to clarify, I'm going to read off the five conditions. I want to make sure that there's no changes whatsoever. I believe you've already covered these, but, so the remaining approximately 45 plus or minus acres to the rear of the site remain undeveloped.
Yes. And may I just follow up on that? We've actually drafted a deed, we've worked it out with the state and with the local people, and I believe that's about to happen in this month.
Terrific. That 25% of the residential resident, residential rental units qualify as workforce housing rental units, as defined under New Hampshire State Workforce Housing Statute.
Yes.
We've already made that assertion.
Thank you.
That the restriction for workforce housing rentals shall be for not less than 30 years.
Yes.
That the residential portion shall remain as rental units for not less than 30 years.
Yes.
And finally, that the multifamily portion of the complex shall include not more than 224 residential rental units.
That's correct.
Thank you. So the, you are fully prepared to meet the five conditions that were set forth in the initial acceptance, but there's this, there's several issues that I see. The first is the ambiguity with as part of a mixed use. And it will be part of a mixed-use development, but it is separated in time?
Yes.
You do still intend to...
Yes, absolutely.
So whatever portion, the several acres at the front, is intended to be non-residential use?
Yes.
Which qualifies within that zoning district, et cetera?
Let me give you a little detail on that, just so there's no misunderstanding. I think I'm a little gun-shy because I probably, well, I don't want to say too much because it might sound like a commitment, so I, I perhaps am being too vague here.
No, I understand the line you need to, yeah.
So, but right now, we do know that there are three lots. And then first lot, and I'm going to refer to numbers just so it's clear in the record, and then you can rely on this, because I'm being specific on purpose here. Of course, I'm not going to be able to read them. But Lot 47-6 is approximately, a little over two acres, as shown on the plan that we submitted in the application. That will be the lot that is dedicated to the commercial use. We are fully intending to build a commercial use. It was originally proposed, you conceptually, as a 40 to 45,000-foot, square foot building on two stories.
Yep.
I can't make a commitment on the size.
Understood.
And, and that could be part of our problem down the road. So I want to make it clear that we, we are not committing to a particular size, we are committing to the use. We are also not asking, we are specifically not asking for a variance of that piece.
Understood.
So it would remain zoned as the town has it zoned. The Lot 47-7 is the lot that will have the residential component, the complex, as shown. And it is essentially, it is a, almost exactly like what it was proposed in the beginning, it consists of three buildings. Two of the buildings actually have a connector, but they're really separate buildings in many regards. And each has, well, two have 75 units and one has 74 units. So that's just the way it was when we first proposed it. And they're about the exact same size, about the size that we proposed in the beginning. I think we said that it would be 17,500 square feet of a footprint, and that was on purpose. That whole discussion continues to be...
The only restriction that we're worried about is the number of units, 224 in the workforce, et cetera?
224 is the number.
Okay.
That's, that's correct. And the last lot, which is the one you're looking at as 47-7-1, that is the one that we are going to, at the time, we said we were, would restrict it permanently. It has now gone beyond that, and we are going to deed it to the town.
Can I just ask about...
Yeah, go ahead.
The town will be the owner?
That's my understanding.
And will there be a stewardship organization that will hold the conservation easement?
Yes.
Is there going to be a conservation easement?
So the town will own it, and it will be restricted by conservation easements, as defined in the statute. And it will be, the overseer of the land is the Exeter Conservation Commission, but there is also some enforcement rights that are going to be granted to the state of New Hampshire, NH, in New Hampshire DES. And this is all, really, I've had very little to do with that. It's more reacting to what they have said they wanted. So essentially, we're giving the Conservation Commission and the state what they want in that matter, but we do lose, you know, it is not going to be developed.
Not developed by you, but also not developed by any...
That's correct. In fact, the reason the DES, my present understanding of things, is DES need, has to approve anything that happens, even on Clark Road.
Because the condition was undeveloped. The condition was not donated.
Right.
The condition was undeveloped.
Right.
The condition was undeveloped.
Right.
You donate it, you lose control over that development.
But it's restricted. It will not be developed, and that's the restriction.
Can I ask a question of some?
Sure.
Do we have a method of verifying that?
There should be a conservation easement.
I'm going to step outside.
Okay.
But I do believe, talking with Kristen, our natural resource plan, we've been in contact with the company, that I do believe that all of that is covered.
Okay.
I cannot verify it, which is documented.
So the town inherits the responsibility for undeveloped?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
I believe that was presented at the planning board.
Okay.
You know, I, I was going to say.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that.
The project will not go ahead without that.
Right. I just want to make sure that we're giving the land also means undeveloped, because they're not necessarily the same thing.
No, we don't even know that.
Okay. I don't even know that it is developed. Well, second question, access to the property is on 47-7, is that correct?
Yes, so there is one access, the main road, and you can see it in the site plan. So there is one entrance in.
Yeah.
And it is actually a common, it is used for both, for all, you know, the two lots. It's by design, and there's cross easements to support the scheme, if you will. And that is the entrance. There have been traffic studies. You may remember that this is also part of the corridor that's subject to the TIF program. And we've worked and continued to work with the town regarding the traffic improvements. That's kind of ongoing.
I'm assuming that one of the reasons for doing the two lots, and forgive me, is to enable Mr. Monahan to potentially sell 47-6.
That's correct.
To a separate development.
Either sell or finance separately. So in order to finance separately, you need to have a separate lot, because, yeah, because there's a mortgage, et cetera.
Okay. Are there any further questions from the members of the board for the applicant at this time?
Well.
Ms. Panel.
I'm confused. I have the minutes of the extra planning board here from August 20th, 2020. And it says, Mr. Sharple's read aloud, the ZBA condition, something square feet by square feet, shall be construction to the weather, referencing Building C. And I think that means that the commercial part had to be at least built according to the weather, so to speak. This allows the total, referencing Building C, so.
Building C is one of the, the residentials are labeled A, B, and C in their plans.
Well, I'm just getting on further. What, how did this whole thing begin? Because Sharple says it's a zoning board condition, and we didn't put any conditions. So where did this condition?
I may be able to answer that, and I appreciate your question because I'm understanding you, and that's how we understood it. So the difficulty, and kind of going back to where I said I get a little gun shy on what I say, it's fair that you should expect that we will abide by our presentation. And by my using the words mixed use, there was an implication that that was associated with the ZB, with the actual variance. I didn't expect that. Maybe you didn't expect that, but apparently Mr. Sharple's did. So that's where it apparently came from. Now, when I first read that, I didn't even understand that was what he was saying. Short story is, we've kind of gone through the process, and it's now clear that that's what's holding it up. So that's why I'm here to clear that up. But you've hit the nail on the head.
Right. I would agree that, I think Mr. Sharple's was perhaps correct when he said that that was a condition. It's not a condition, it is part of the, it's part of it, but it's not.
The main verb.
Right.
Context of the motion to approve.
But it wasn't a ZBA condition.
It wasn't a ZBA condition, but it is part of the ZBA decision from then. So it's not a condition, but it's part of the, our original decision. So I don't think we need to worry about what planning board did or didn't do. That's a separate, separate thing. We're looking at the basic underlying decision that we made that even enables residential use at all in this zone. Correct?
And that language as part of a mixed-use development was intentional.
Yes.
Because I remember discussing it and wanting, insisting on it.
Yes.
So.
And it was probably part of the application, it was probably presented to us as a mixed-use development.
Yes.
We fully, you know, had all intentions of building the commercial building right away.
And I hope you still do.
I hope we do, too.
I hope it's still possible. I think it's entirely possible, should this board wish to do so, for us to amend this in a way that clarifies it. Yeah, let's get there.
The world has changed, we get that, so we'll talk about it.
Let's get there. Martha, does that answer your question to some extent?
No.
No.
Continue.
I don't see, and I haven't really read this word for word, where the zoning board discussed the timing and the building, the commercial building, that had to be up before the other two finished. I mean, I don't see any reference to that. And I looked at the motion that was passed, and nothing sits.
That's correct.
And then I look at these minutes of the planning board, and they say it's a zoning board, and I'm confused.
I don't believe that it was anything that we ever discussed.
No, we never did discuss it because it wasn't an issue. We didn't have any concerns about it for a number of reasons. We, the applicant, and I say that with the royal we, if you don't mind, fully expected to build the commercial building, and that's where we were headed. Things changed. There was no discussion about the timing of it. The most important thing was that we were trying to minimize the footprint of development, maximize the undeveloped area, and make sure that we had an appropriate use with buffers, et cetera, that was in the right place. And all of that continues to be true. And as I say, the lot is still going to be zoned commercial, so it will be a mixed-use project. We just never thought about the timing of it because it wasn't an issue at the time.
Mr. Silver.
So often when we have a request for a variance, we'll debate it back and forth, and then we'll decide to approve it. And frequently, the application is simple enough that we can just say, we approve your request for a variance as submitted. You sent us too damn much for us to do that tonight. And so, one of the things that we do is we close off and talk without you being able to add. And it occurred to me that it might be worthwhile figuring out some bullets that simplify what we are actually approving.
I certainly can do that. And I think, I appreciate, I very much appreciate your comment. And to simplify things, in my view, you are determining the same five criteria that you would determine in any variance. The one thing that's different here is you've already done it.
Right, no, no, okay. You're missing my point.
Okay.
I'm assuming we approve it.
Okay.
So now we've approved it, what did we approve?
Okay, what I'd like you to approve is the variance.
You wanted to write it?
For 224 residential multifamily units, of which 25% or 56 will be workforce housing. Use the exact same language of your earlier approval. And the only other thing I would like in there is that there is no requirement regarding the time of the construction of the commercial property. So they can be completely independent.
Needs to be specific to Lot 67-7.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Needs to be specific because there was been a subdivision. You just asked for this.
That's what I wanted to get at as well. So because the underlying, the underlying lot lines have changed.
They have.
And so we need to be specific, thank you.
But the residential variance is only requested at that one.
There's no impact at all on 47-6?
Correct.
That remains.
Because there's no variance request there.
Because it is commercial in a commercial zone.
Correct.
And there's no change on 47-7-1?
Because that's being donated.
Because there's nothing granted there, other than it will be not developed.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So it's still going to be part of the condition for Lot 47-7?
Yep. Okay.
So all the conditions apply to the Lot 47-7?
Okay, we have a little tricky bit of work to do here. Are there any further questions for the applicant before we move on? Are you all set, Mr. Leonard? If not, I'd like to open it up to the public.
I believe I am. I would ask for an opportunity to respond to the public if that's necessary.
Absolutely, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much for your.
All right, at this point, we're going to open it up to the public. If there's anyone here who would like to comment on the request for a modification and clarification and extension of the variance that was previously granted, please step up, state your name for the record.
Yes, thank you, members of the board.
Raise your right hand, swear you.
My name, and my social and everything, yeah. I'm Nick Taylor. I'm the executive director of the Workforce Housing Coalition of the Greater Seacoast, speaking in favor of the proposal here, specifically in favor of the 56 workforce housing units proposed here. We are a nonprofit organization that supports workforce housing in the region. We cover 53 communities, including Exeter, covering Stratford County, Rockingham County, and Southern Hillsborough County. So just wanted to take just a quick minute and just kind of lay out the problem and why this is so desperately needed, and I hope that you will support the project and keep it moving forward. There are a lot of estimates that say New Hampshire is short 20,000 housing units. The demand is absolutely there, and we need those units to continue to grow our economy and continue to thrive here. Our workforce has still not recovered fully from COVID. Before the pandemic, we had 778,000 members of our workforce. Right now, new numbers released today, we're about 756,000. So we need those next, you know, 20,000 or so members of our workforce to come back and to come into the state. And right now, there's no place to live. We're hearing from businesses that they can't find workers because the workers can't find housing. And as you well know, there's certainly a housing and rental crisis here. So the latest numbers from the New Hampshire Housing Finance Authority's rental housing rate is that in Rockingham County, the vacancy rate is 0.8%, which is well below the healthy margin of about 5%. And so, you know, the supply is just not there, which is why this project is so important to be able to build. And the latest numbers from the New Hampshire Business and Economic Affairs Department show that the new building permits are not catching up to demand quite yet, is that by and large, their single-family or two-family homes, in terms of the net new, and the total net new units, have not really reached the same level that they were at in the early 2000s. So the units are not on the way, the demand is there now, the vacancy rates are incredibly low, which is pushing the costs incredibly high. So the average, medium rental cost right now in Rockingham County for a two-bedroom apartment is up to $1,600, which is out of reach for many members of our workforce that we so desperately need, especially in the retail service and hospitality industry. So I would hope that you'll consider supporting this project. I do think the workforce housing component is incredibly important to our local economy, our regional economy, and our state economy. And so, you know, I hope you will consider it, and thank you for taking the time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, I really appreciate your comment.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you have any experience with these types of conditions of approval as far as holding to rental housing and holding to workforce housing? Has there been any?
You know, it's a great question.
Difficulty keeping these projects in those.
Not to my knowledge, when it's laid out very clearly. And it is something that I think we need more communities to do. And we're starting to see that uptick because costs have gotten so out of control that we need to have some of these protections in place if we're going to, you know, have a place for our janitors, waitresses, cashiers, service workers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to add a word? Hearing, oh, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
Aaron Brown, I live at 11 Deer Haven Drive in Exeter. I'm also vice chair of the Exeter Planning Board. I think you might have been misinterpreting the condition in the notes that you were reading from one of our meetings. During our hearings, we did not interpret, I was part of those hearings, I was part of the condition, I was part of the condition 16, which is on our approval, which I think is the reason we're here, frankly. I think if the Exeter Planning Board abandoned the commercial aspect of this project, you wouldn't be here. The applicant would not have tried to sue the town, and they would be probably moving forward. And I think what they're not telling you is that they really don't want to do the commercial. So what they're doing is they're separating lots, they're putting a commercial piece over here, which would make me wonder why are we even here? If the variance that they're really looking for doesn't apply, I don't understand why you're here. Are you rehearing this variance? I mean, that's something I'm very confused on. You have a variance that's been approved. Are we going through a five-tail test again on this variance? Are we starting from scratch? Or are you going to unwind a planning board condition?
I'm responsible, Mr. Brown, and the members of this committee are responsible only for our decision. And as I look at the May 22, 2019 decision, without regard for whatever has happened downstream. There are several things about this. Number one is the ambiguity surrounding the as part of a mixed-use development.
Right.
That's number one. And number two was the making sure that, no, we're not going to rehear the five original criteria, we're not going to go through another variance application. We're looking strictly at this decision, is there, there are two things that are needed. One is a clarification, and the second is an extension, which has also been requested because this runs out May 22, 2022. And so, an extension is a normal part of our operating procedure as well, even though it hasn't been discussed here this evening. So we are not planning on rehearing it because the principle is that we allowed residential use in a commercial zone, and that is unchanged. None of the factors that made us say, yeah, part of this parcel of land can be used for residential, none of the underlying conditions have changed, except this indication that it is part of a mixed-use development. And that's not a condition of approval. It is part of the statement, but it is not a condition. So it is a little ambiguous whether, and I understand if I was in the business of financing such a large-scale project, that the presence of this statement would cause me concern. What this board needs to discuss, and what we will discuss, is whether or not we are comfortable not tying it to a commercial use, but rather saying, there's a parcel of land that we anticipated in 2019 would be developed as residential, this is where it sits. Does it have to be part of commercial, or can it simply be developed, and the commercial sits there for 10 years and has never developed? And that's something that we need to discuss here. But we're not going to go back and relitigate.
Okay, it's confusing, it's a.
It is, it's unusual.
Yeah.
It's an unusual request, I will grant that.
Yeah, so I'm really here as Aaron Brown, Exeter citizen, by the way, I'm not necessarily representing the planning board, I can probably relate to you questions that happened in my experience in the hearing, but I don't have any authority on the planning board tonight, I'm just Aaron.
And nor do we have any authority to rehear what was said at the planning board or look at your conditions of approval.
Sure.
I'm sure that whatever happens here this evening, they will, the applicant will appear before the planning board for clarification on that as well.
Yeah, it makes sense. So part of that was just trying to get some communication going between our boards. Obviously, we've tried that, I think, in the past with all board meetings, it's been such a strange time lately to try to operate. I mean, I guess one of the things, and one of the reasons I'm here, I've never come to a zoning board meeting in this fashion, I've been to, I think, two in my time here with clients. I am a real estate broker, primarily residential. clients. I am a real estate broker, primarily residential, and I found you folks really good to work with, and I know that the applicant has probably found the same. And I guess I'm concerned a little bit because as part of being in the community and voting for water and sewer to be extended down Route twenty-seven, there was a real push for opening up that "commercial" quote-unquote corridor during that time. And now, there was also in a proposal to rezone that corridor to allow multifamily residential use on that corridor, which went in front of the town voters, I think it was six or seven years ago. It might have been a little longer. And that was defeated at the town vote. And now, sitting on the planning board and being in the community, I'm starting to see residential uses coming in through variances. And I'm just questioning, at what point is a two-hundred-and-twenty-four residential unit variance in a commercial zone that prohibits residential use becoming a rezoning of the property? And that's not a question that I can answer because I'm not an attorney. I'm a layman. I operate in the industry. But I think when the town itself has spoken against that use, and the town has taken on the financial burden of extending services out there with a push towards commercial, I think that should be adhered to. And if it's time for a zoning change, then maybe we should be bringing this back to the voters because that's something on the planning board we're supposed to be trying to do. So, if you are seeing this come up again and again, a lot of times, in our little world, you guys give us variances, and then we plan out a project with people, but they already have the variances in hand. So, we don't come back here and say, hey, why'd you do that? Why'd you do this? But what were you thinking? It's already done. It's what they can use, what they can operate on, and we work on the plan from there. But this has been, you know, we're getting into a couple of these now. So, if from my way of looking at it, maybe we really need to look at the zoning itself and work together towards getting something in front of the voters and saying, hey, should we really be rezoning? If the need and the demand is there on a residential side and not on the commercial side, then maybe we really need to rethink this as a community.
That's entirely possible, and it's not something that obviously is within our purview. We do not write the zoning at all. We simply interpret what's on the books in front of us. And one of the things that I'd like to address is your suggestion that the voters rejected something. I think there's a different way of framing it, to be honest. And I don't want to extend this. There are other applicants waiting this evening.
Yeah.
But I think the voters perhaps said, we don't wish to give blanket approval to residential in this zone and are content to allow the process that has been in place for many, many years, nineteen seventy-two, for zoning to take place in Exeter, when zoning came in in Exeter, to allow the zoning board of adjustment to make a case-by-case decision, which is the situation we find ourselves in now. It is possible, and we should have a discussion outside the context of this meeting about whether or not zoning does, the underlying zoning does need to be changed, which is something that you guys suggest comes out of the planning office. But I think that we, rather than having a blanket, we're cer, the voters did not reject residential. They rejected a change in the zoning that would have allowed it on a blanket basis. And yet, every zoning regulation allows certain things by special exception and other things by variance. And so, I'm quite content that we have a system that works right now, which allows for residential use to come in by variance. If, in fact, the, in the aggregate, it's getting to be too much, that's something that can certainly be discussed outside the context of this application.
Yeah, I just think it's something we should discuss.
And frankly, the, the conversation, nobody spoke up against, against it in twenty nineteen. In twenty nineteen, it was like, putting two-hundred-and-twenty-four residential units on this property in this location makes a lot of sense, made a lot of sense to this board at that time. Nothing's changed with that, I don't think. But I do thank you for your thoughtful comments.
Yeah, I think that's something that, you know, these hearings are very lightly attended in general, and certainly COVID's, forget that part, but just in general, I mean, I sit on a planning board. It's pretty rare that someone that isn't an immediate rebutter, and unfortunately not in my backyard type of action, is ninety percent of what we get. So, the, there's not going to be a lot of that in a commercial zone. I would not expect.
Actually, you'd be surprised the number of people who come out, both pro and con residential on the, yeah.
Okay.
All right. No, there are sometimes a dozen people in here who's willing to speak up, and they're prominent people, people who've been on the, there are people that are consistently in favor of having that type of development. There are other people who are very concerned about it.
So, so the one argument I would say is just, the five-tail test to get a variance is a lot different than a use allowed by zoning, right? And that's where I think if this is going to consistently be happening and we are seeing the need, then, you know, we should be working with the town planner, we should be working with staff, we should be working together as a community to, maybe it's still under a special exemption or a special ordinance, but it's an allowed use because hardship under a variance is a pretty substantial hurdle.
I like having the variance criteria in place for this type of, and except for this type of a use.
You do?
Yeah, very much.
I think hardship is hard to prove.
It is.
I mean, hardship, I can't get what I want commercially, so I need residential units. I don't know what the hardship really is there.
Well, I think we've said, by leaving it the way it is, we have a higher bar on residential use in a commercial zone than we would if it was allowed by special exception.
I understand. You're more controlled.
We have more control. We have, the applicant has to be on their toes.
Sure.
They have to make sure that they're.
Sure. And one other thing is.
They can't take it for granted.
No.
We should move on, sir.
All right. Well, I just wanted to clarify one thing if I can. In terms of the timing and the condition on sixteen, in our approval, the planning board's existing approval on this project, we did not require them to build the commercial. They can actually build a hundred-and-twelve residential units and get an occupancy permit on a hundred-and-twelve residential units and never touch the ground for their commercial project.
You guys will have to deal with that after we finish.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to address the board, Mr. Winham?
Very, very quick. All right, thank you very much for the time.
Time's up.
Okay. I do, I do want to say.
Introduce yourself for the.
Sorry, Darren Winham, three Juniper Ridge, Exeter. I, I, I don't think it's true at all that Mr. Monahan doesn't want to do the commercial. I think he very much wants to do the commercial, and there's a lot of evidence to show that. The fact is, he has had a Realtor, a very good Realtor, on that site for a very long time. And I've worked with that Realtor, and we've tried and tried. We've had stops and starts. And so, he wants to build a commercial. As soon as the market will, will, will allow it, he will absolutely do that. And I just want to say two other quick things. One, one thing I really like about this project is that it is rental. Obviously, you guys know I talk to businesses every single day. Workforce is a massive issue. And rental is sixty percent AMI, whereas if it was condos, it'd be eighty percent AMI. So, that sixty percent is a big, big deal. It's fifty-six units. That sixty percent's a big, big deal. And the last thing I want to say is that in terms of looking.
Sixty percent AMI, can you just?
I'm sorry, area of immediate income. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's, there was another project that was put forward five or six, maybe even seven years ago, and that is McKay Drive. And that is very much like the situation Mr. Monahan's in now, where the market was very good for market-rate housing. They built two large buildings, filled those buildings right away. Those people that live there work here, work in Stratton, work in Hampton. And then, when the market allowed, we found the commercial finally in the front. And you see the perimeter of school going in now. So, that's, that's how I look at this thing. So, anyway, thanks for the time.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to address the board? Sir.
I just, I just have.
Free for bottle, Mr. Leonard.
Yes, please. Thank you. I just have to say that while I appreciate Mr. Brown's comments, the whole purpose of a variance is that there are special conditions relating to this property that we went through in great detail, and this board found unanimously, without a great deal of discussion, because it was, as I would suggest, very obvious that this is a unique site. So, I, I totally disagree with Mr. Brown in that regard. I will also say that the TIF for the corridor specifically includes reference to multifamily. So, it is not contrary to what the town passed. We went through this whole thing at the planning board. You can tell that we don't agree, but that's, I have to say that just to clarify the record. There was an earlier comment requesting experience regarding covenants and enforcing these covenants. We have used the same or very similar covenants in Londonderry. They are enforceable. Part of the reason for these covenants is not just from the town standpoint, but also from the financing standpoint, because this financing is specifically tied toward tax credits, which require these to be. And so, the bonding agents want to have enforceable covenants that get them what they need for the financing, and these do work for that because they've been reviewed for that purpose. And I think those are the only comments I have, other than to say that Mr. Monahan has told me and whispered in my ear earlier here today, two minutes ago, that he very much wants to develop the commercial property. He's a developer, and that's his goal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing and move into deliberations. Would anyone like to take the lead?
So, to the point that we were just discussing with Mr. Brown, the intention of the zoning and the intention of the TIF and the commercial zoning was, was part of the discussion, certainly was part of my motivation. The commercial use component was very important to my willingness to vote for this. And the quality of the commercial use, not just, you know, and I don't, no offense to Jiffy Lube, but not just some tiny little, you know, commercial use, one, one-user commercial use, but a significant two-story commercial building with, you know, more office or some more significant type of commercial use, rather than just a single-tenant, small. So, my only concern with, with the clarification that's being asked for here is that the commercial part's important. It's now been subdivided, and it can be developed with any commercial use, you know, to whatever highest bidder. And I don't know how, what mechanism, what we can do to ensure that it's a more significant, better-quality commercial property that was the reason that I felt okay voting for this in the first place, because it's no longer tied to, it's not all part of the same parcel. So, that's my struggle with this application right now, is I love the workforce housing. I think that when the voters last voted for the potential zoning change, perhaps six, whatever, years ago, the housing market wasn't as, in such dire shape, and the need wasn't as great, and market trends have shown us that having rental housing like this near the jobs is a good thing, and, you know, mixed-use developments are, are the way to go. So, I feel good about it in many regards, but that lack of assuring a significant size and quality of commercial development on the other parcel is what's giving me a hard time right here.
Somebody who.
Very good comment.
Somebody who buys that property is going to want to have it produce as much as possible. So, if you.
So, the goals of the highest-value buyer may not be the goals of the town of Exeter when they voted for the commercial district. And that's why I kind of referenced, say, you know, a Jiffy Lube versus a nice office building, is because it's potentially a much, you know, much smaller building development and fewer jobs and lower, lower-paying jobs, perhaps, for certain uses that might be willing to pay more for the land.
If it were bigger.
Then. I think, I mean, I know we've closed public session, but I think Darren understands what I'm talking about in terms of economic development, the kind of jobs that the town was seeking when they made this investment was more towards, well, I don't want to pick out neighborhoods in other towns.
That may have been what they wanted, but they didn't clarify that in the requirements.
But they clarified it in their application when I voted for it, that it was going to be a two-story office building with, you know, a productive use that benefits the town, like a, some type of adult daycare or child daycare or something like that, as opposed to just, you know, a fast-food place or a gas station or something, which, nothing wrong with those uses, but we've, we've addressed those with other applications. This was meant to be something that I think was intended to be, attract more and better-paying jobs.
The only thing I'll add to that is that if the applicant had not wanted to put in residential, it would never would have appeared at zoning.
There, yes.
And if the applicant had wanted to subdivide part of that property and put in, we're dissing Jiffy Lube, had wanted to put in and make a transmission dealership, they would not have had to come to this board.
Correct.
And so, the concerns of this board, I believe, are, I'm not going to use the word limited, I'll hint at it, to the residential portion.
We made a trade-off. We agreed to the residential portion, but we also, I, at least I had expectations of what the commercial would be. And I know Mr. Monahan's track record, and I am not doubting his, you know, desire, but that frequently, you know, when the, when the commercial part gets subdivided off, it.
There's less control.
There's a lot less control, and things don't always go the way people plan.
Will the presence, Ms. Davies, do you think of the, of the residential very closely abutting, impact the type of commercial uses that would be comfortable going in there? Is that a mitigating factor?
Well, that's a good point. There, once the residents are there, then they rebutters, whether they're renters or, or owners, and they will complain loudly if they don't like the abutting use, but.
And I don't think.
They probably will complain, no matter what.
I don't think the applicant has a financial, strong financial interest in undercutting because this is mandated to remain rental.
So, at the time we approved this in twenty nineteen, my concern was that the front, that often mixed-use projects, the residential portion, especially the lower-density residential portion gets built, and the commercial stuff never gets built. And then, at some point later on, they apply for variance or something. In this case, because of all the development that's happened and the example you gave down the street where the daycare is being built now, I believe this will be developed. It's highest investment use is commercial. It's just, I'd like, I don't know if there's a way to assure it's the kind of commercial that we were promised.
I have a very, I mean, we would often, in this case, we referred to as applied. It was, we referred to the application. We didn't specify that it must be a two-story office building of approximately forty-eight thousand square feet. We simply said, as you apply, as in the application. The application is unchanged, even though we are modifying forty-seven dash seven. The original application is still unchanged.
Is that still going to hold, do you think?
It's a little thin.
The, the approval that we granted in twenty nineteen, will the commercial part of it still have, now that the property's been subdivided and we're, we're slightly modifying or clarifying the residential part, will any expectations of the application as presented in twenty nineteen still be enforceable?
On forty-seven dash six.
On the other lot, forty-seven.
On the commercial bit.
It's kind of a stretch. I don't have a high comfort level. And, and again, I don't doubt the intentions, but I just, you know, this doesn't always go the way people want it to.
I understand the protection that you're trying to build in. Are there any other issues or questions that we would like to discuss? Because this is, this is interesting.
Before, before I quit, Laura.
Okay.
Read the.
You're never going to quit.
Read the special exceptions that are allowed in the Epping Road commercial.
Okay.
Mr. Steele, are they open in front of you? Will you read them, please?
I'm not.
He doesn't want to. He doesn't want to. That's okay. I got it. I'll be there in a minute.
Page number?
Four and four.
Four dash four? Okay. So, special exception, Epping Road commercial. Gasoline and/or service stations, sexually-oriented business use, light industry, medical rehab facility, elderly congregate healthcare facilities, churches and similar places of worship, community buildings, social halls, clubs, lodges, fraternal organizations, and heliports.
None of those are in any way would be considered. None of those are in any way would be considered heavy industry or the kind of wonderful developments that you are suggesting.
Is your, is your point that, that we do still have a degree of control because if something would have to come back to us for a special exception?
Absolutely.
And we do have the option to deny something?
Absolutely.
So it could be an auto repair shop or a car wash that employs only one or two people per shift instead of the nice office build. And again, these are necessary services. I'm not suggesting that they're bad, but we had bought into a plan-
Our hopes were raised.
Yeah. That was a good to the community, that would be more substantial, add to the tax base more, you know, like things that Darren sells when he's trying to get the right uses in the right places in our town as economic development person.
And none of that is possible without housing.
And I, I don't hate the housing part, I like the housing part, I just, you know, we, we bought a whole idea, I just don't know if there's a way to tie.
Right. What we were asked to do in 2019 is to facilitate housing, specifically workforce housing, and nothing has changed, except that there's, it's no longer tied to a commercial development. It's going to be a tricky sort of, was there any further discussion? We don't have to go through the criteria, we've already done that. I think what we need to do is have somebody make a motion, and that motion needs to be fairly sophisticated in terms of what we're doing. I will remind the board and whoever would like to make a motion that what we're going to do is address the, as part of a mixed-use development, we're going to specify that this applies only to lot 47-7, and we are also going to extend, as is our standard, one year, the exception which expires on May 22, 2022. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Well, those are, those are, in essence, what we needed to say, so I will so move. A one-year extension and the separation of the development, of the commercial portion separated from the rest of the development.
From the residential.
To me, this is a really nice story, but there's too much in it, and-
I'm going to make a motion, which I normally do, you're in charge of getting it voted on, because you're the clerk.
You didn't like my motion.
It's not a motion.
What is it?
It's, it's a conversation.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the request for a clarification and modification of the decision that was made May 22, 2019 regarding the parcel under development 47-6 and 47-7, tax map parcels 47-6 and 47-7, that we no longer consider that the residential development needs to be tied to the commercial development in terms of timing of the development. Further, that we confirm all of the conditions of approval that were granted in 2019. Next, that we agree that the residential portion of this application refers specifically to lot 47-7. And finally, that we grant a one-year extension to the application or to the decision so that the application now, the approval now runs through May 22, 2022.
Is there a second? Is that the date we want this to expire, in two months?
2023. My sincere apologies. I meant to say 2023, not May 22, 2022.
Is there a second with the date update?
I'll second.
Moving seconded.
Is there any discussion of the motion that's before us? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve indicate by saying aye.
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 You can say nay.
Well, that's not what he called for, but-
Chair votes aye. Ms. Davies?
I'm going to go with nay.
The motion passes four to one. I hope that does the job that's necessary. And I thank everyone for your attention to this, this matter this evening.
Thanks very much.
You're welcome.
Thanks, George. I hope you're very well. It's very stressful on our part.
I hope this adds good clarification, I hope it's-
Good, but very good, full of vision, and it makes it not too much easier.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Yep, and thank you to everyone who came out this evening. Mr. Taylor, Mr. Winham, thank you, appreciate it. Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown, thank you.
Ms. Davies will make you proud.
I hope so, I don't doubt you.
If we see a Jiffy Lube there, you're coming back before this board.
Jiffy Lube, we'll make you proud.
All right.
I actually have a lot of faith in you, so, thank you.
All right, we have other business. Do we want to continue, or do you want a couple of minutes? Does anybody need a break? Are we good?
Yeah.
I'm good. Great.
Haven't seen you in a long time.
Okay. We're going to move on, then. The application of Exxonian Properties LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2B for a change in the purpose.
I think it's over here.
Yeah, I'm going to have the other one.
Okay. I'm going to start over. The application of Exxonian Properties LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2B for a change in the purpose of a non-conforming use to permit a multifamily residential use of the existing structure on the property located at 43 Front Street and a variance from Article 5, Section 5.6.6 for relief to provide no onsite parking where 24 spaces are required. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, tax map parcel number 72-198. This is ZBA case number 22-5. Ms. Summers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Sharon Summers, I'm with Donahue Tucker and Chandela, and I'm here tonight representing Exxonian Properties LLC. We are here tonight to seek relief, to allow parking on the street for our proposed multifamily housing project, and to change the use from one non-conforming use, that is a church, into a new non-conforming use of multifamily, multifamily residential. With me tonight are the owners of Exxonian, Florence Ruffner and David Cowie, and they will be much better equipped than I to answer specific detailed questions about the building, so they'll be happy to do that. And following the presentation on the variance criteria, we would ask to have this board grant us the relief as presented. So with that, obviously, we're doing two variances tonight.
Yeah, I'd like to address use first, please, if we may.
Yes, that's exactly what I was going to say, Mr. Chair. So, just walking quickly through the, the variance criteria that has been previously submitted to you, the first criteria, of course, is that this is not going to be contrary to the public interest. The objective of the ordinance having to do with a change from one non-conforming use to another is really, I think, absent any explicit information, an effort to try to prevent some sort of inadvertent problems going, shifting from one use to another. And in determining that question, you have to look at the essential character of the locality and make sure that the proposed change is not going to threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. So in looking at the essential character of this locality, the properties situated around it really are a mix of residential uses, as well as the Exeter Historical Society, as well as the educational services and building, including the dormitories and churches on Elm Street. Incorporating a multifamily residential unit into this locality is not going to alter the essential character of all of the uses that I just described, and the presence of that multifamily residential is not going to threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. The second criteria of the variance, as you know, is the spirit of the ordinance, and whether that's observed, as you know, under New Hampshire law, that variance criteria is effectively identical to that of the public interest, and so that has already been addressed. The substantial justice criteria for this use application has to do with looking at the benefit of the applicant, or to the applicant, to allow residential use on this site, and then comparing that with any particular or potential detriment either to the public or to any individual. So the benefit to the applicant, if this variance for the use is granted, is that the existing church structure can remain intact and that a viable use can be found for this structure, and multifamily residential is going to work in this existing structure, and thus the, the structure can continue standing. There is no known detriment that we're aware of, either to the public or any individuals, by having the multifamily residential use at that location. Moving on to whether or not the value to the surrounding property is going to be diminished, we believe that it will not. The proposed residential use is going to be consistent with other nearby uses of educational or education, municipal usage, and other residential uses, and we are unaware of any evidence that this proposal would diminish the property values. Finally, turning to the hardship criteria, the first element of that criteria is the special conditions of the property, and in this case, the special condition is focused on the fact that the property contains the First Baptist Church, which was constructed in the 19th century. The applicant intends to keep the existing structure there and has worked very diligently with the Historic District Commission and obtained approval to be able to do so. The special conditions of the property really are focused on the, the keeping of that church intact. In order to be able to do that, there needs to be a determination as to how that building can be used effectively and in an economically viable way. Having studied that and looked at the proposed list of permitted uses, it is really not possible to fit in any of the permitted uses while keeping this church building intact. The permitted uses include single-family dwellings, public schools, recreation facilities, or open space developments, really none of which are going to be work in, in the confines of this existing structure. There is no fair and substantial relationship which exists between the change of the non-conforming use from one to another, and the proposed use is compatible with the existing use of other nearby residential properties, as well as other nearby uses, and the, the intent, of course, is to prevent the, the impact. Thus, we believe that there is no fair and substantial relationship with that intent of preventing negative impacts and how that ordinance is applied to this particular property. And then finally, the proposed use is a reasonable one. As I've indicated, there aren't many permitted uses that are allowed to be used on this particular piece of property, and none of them are going to work within the confines of this existing church structure. The proposal is going to be compatible with the neighboring properties, and it will also help to, with the objective of, of keeping the church intact and is reasonable. So for all those reasons, I would contend that we meet the variance criteria for the request to change from one non-conforming use to another. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions, if you'd like, on this variance before moving into the next one, if that's acceptable.
It is. Thank you, Ms. Summers. Are there any questions from members of the board?
I don't believe you mentioned it's going to be 11 residential units.
That's correct.
And the intention is to be ownership units, condos?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So, we have before us, is there any further questions from the Summers?
No.
Son of a gun, you're good. I would say, are there any members of the public that would wish to speak? But the members of the public have a vested interest in speaking, so they're probably not going to want to.
Probably not, unless you ask, unless you ask them a question.
Correct. So on the use variance, are we ready to move to deliberations that rapidly? I believe we are. Closing the public session on the use variance and moving to the members of the board. Mr. Merrill, any questions? Specifically on use, we haven't gotten to the-
The hard one.
The other one. Ms. Davies?
He looks like he's about to say something, no?
I don't quite understand why, I'm not saying anything bad about either one of you.
He's not allowed to talk to them anyway.
Not allowed to talk to them anyway. You gotta talk to us.
Is why somebody would want to do all this and just not sell it to the academy.
Well, I can think of-
Not our concern.
Not our concern, it's not our business.
I just, you just said this.
I think that, you know, they don't have to own everything, for one thing.
I know, but they were just, and they were just in here, what, a month ago, complaining about places to put people?
Well, and there's a severe-
I'm sure that ownership by the, by the academy is not something that has ever occurred.
I don't know, I'm not in their brains, I don't know.
And it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
They want to put in 11 units and then sell them to academy people.
Exactly. Are there any, are there any other comments?
I think it's a wonderful idea.
I think that, given the site size, given the location and the zoning, there's not a lot of great options in the type of building and the age of the building, and, other than conversion to residential, I really, I mean, it'd be great if you could put us some type of school or some kind of, you know, little-
We'd make a great dance facility, for example, but we've already been there with-
Right, so, you know-
...
With a what?
That large new structure.
Oh, yes. So, so I, I think that the use, you know, it's not going to be an inexpensive conversion. I think it's great that they're going to be able to do it, I think the use is good, so I don't have a problem with the use. I think that, you know, it's a limited building, it's special purpose, and it's historic, and they're probably going to do a nice job with it, so I'm happy with the use.
My notes, as I was listening to Ms. Summers' presentation, was to write "okay" next to all five of the variance criteria. As far as the use variance is concerned, I see no need to articulate the five criteria unless somebody would like to do that.
No, I, I agree with you.
And hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I will do this one, if you want. Let me read. I move to accept the application of Exxonian Properties LLC for variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2B for a change in use to permit 11 units of multifamily residential use in the existing structure at 43 Front Street as proposed.
Second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the application for a use variance indicate by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Nay?
Nay.
Aye. Use variance passes four to one. Back to you, Ms. Summers.
So, turning now to the- So, turning now to the... Turning back to the parking variance, we seek to have no onsite parking, and to have the 24 spaces that are required under the ordinance be met by having people park either on the street, or at nearby municipal parking lots. Turning to the variance criteria, the first to look at is whether the variance is going to be contrary to the public interest. In this case, because we're talking about a parking ordinance, it seems to me that the basic objective of that ordinance is to prevent traffic problems, which may result when there's inadequate, or in this case, no space onsite for the parking needs of the proposed use. And again, in taking a look at that question, we need to examine the essential character of the locality, and whether it's going to threaten public health, safety, or welfare by having the parking for this proposal occur on the street. So, again, the essential character of this locality is a combination of residential uses, the Exeter Historical Society, educational services and buildings, and churches along Elm Street. The parking for each of these uses currently is met in part by onsite parking, and in part by, or in some cases, completely by onsite parking, or by using multiple sources of street parking, including, and I mentioned in my materials, that some of these include residential properties on Spring Street and Elm Street, which have some onsite parking, and some onsite parking exists for the PEA campus. So, in short, the essential character of the locality in relation to parking availability and parking needs is a combination of parking onsite to the various nearby properties, and parking offsite, so that in terms of this proposal, adding 11 residential units, or the needs for those, the parking needs for those, to the existing available street parking, and the existing municipal parking lot, is not going to change the essential character of the locality, or cause public health, safety, or welfare concerns. With regard to the spirit of the ordinance, again, that particular variance criteria is the same as the public interest one, so that has been satisfied. With regard to the third variance criteria, which is substantial justice, again, the test here is to weigh the benefit to the applicant by allowing offsite parking for this proposal, against any detriment to the public or to individuals. The benefit, of course, to the applicant by having this offsite parking variance granted is that, very simply, the proposal will be able to proceed. There is no onsite parking available, so in order to have this proposal take off and be able to proceed, we need to have the ability to park somewhere. And conversely, there's no known detriment, particularly given the amount of offsite parking that's in the area, there's no particular detriment to the public or to any individual that we're aware of. Fourth, as to the values of surrounding properties, and whether those are going to be diminished, again, this is residential, it's consistent with the nearby uses, and as for parking, there's a fairly modest amount of street parking that we're asking for, and we do not believe that that's going to diminish the values of the surrounding properties, and that, taken in conjunction with the improvements to the property that we believe are going to happen, will, if anything, stabilize, if not improve, the surrounding property values. Last is the hardship criteria, and for that, we want to look at the special conditions of the property. So in your materials, I included the survey, and from that, you can, I think, pretty readily see that there really is no ability to park onsite. I've noted that the applicant could seek to simply demolish the site, and construct some sort of a use with a smaller footprint, and in doing so, create some degree of onsite parking. However, the applicant has chosen to keep the structure intact, maintain the historical integrity of the structure, and that necessitates finding parking offsite for this proposal to be able to proceed. As a result, my position is that the special condition of the property, relative to this variance request, is that by keeping the property intact, keeping the historic church intact, we need to find a place off of the property, in which to service the parking needs of this proposed multi-residential use, which has just been approved by this board. I would note also that, and this is really just by way of context, but the town has granted an occupancy of up to 460 people. I mentioned that I attached a permit, I just realized today I did not do so, but this was simply the permit that's been issued by the fire department, and it's issued in conjunction with the fact that it's a place of assembly by the fire department. I note that, just because, I think it does give a sense as to what the town has contemplated could be there in the way of parking needs, in the event that this were to be, continue to be used for a church, and so that, by contrast, the notion of having at most 24 cars on the street, or in the nearby municipal parking lot at any point in time, is really de minimis. The second aspect of the hardship criteria is that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the ordinance and the application. Again, what we're looking for here is, or looking at, is whether traffic problems are going to occur because of the parking offsite. And because of the number of units that we're talking about, which is 11, two additional spaces are needed for guests, that's a total of 24. We believe that, and I included in your materials a Google map presentation, which shows the location of the building, and then the nearby streets on Elm Street, Spring Street, and a block or so away is the municipal parking lot. I think this is important to note, because, both because of the sheer volume of street parking, and parking lot parking that's available, and the fact that some of it is literally, if you look at some of the parking along Spring Street, is literally going to be right outside the side door of this proposed use. So, I know that in some instances, there was some concern expressed in other quarters about people are going to have to walk a long ways, et cetera, et cetera, and I just don't think that's the case. I think that the, here, we do have some parking, which is literally going to be right outside the door, and at most, there would be parking within a block, and I think that the people who are inclined to move into these condominium units, when they are constructed, will not flinch at the idea of walking a block from their cars to their residence. In addition to that, because of the amount, the volume of the street parking that's available, and the fact that some of the other properties already, in part, have onsite parking, we do not believe that the addition of 24 spaces is likely to cause a problem for anyone here. As well, the nature of the use is such, I think, that it's going to be compatible, to the extent that other properties do park on the street. I think that the nature of this use is going to be compatible with those, because it's going to be a residential use. The odds are that people, to some extent, are going to be out and about during the day, whether it's for work-related things, or just being out, and so that the other parking needs that might be occurring in that, during the daytime, by other quarters, such as the academy, or the historical society, or other neighboring residential properties, they will have some place to park during the day, when these residents may be out and about, and conversely, when we're back in the area, the academy may have a lesser need for street parking. So, I think those two things will work out together nicely to complement each other. The last element of the hardship criteria is that the proposed use is a reasonable one. We seek to keep this church intact, and to make it into a new, and desirable, and needed use of multifamily residential, in a downtown, or close to a downtown setting, and in order to do that, people need to park somewhere. They can't park on the site, and the amount that we're seeking to have park on the street is fairly modest, and given the total amount of available street parking and municipal parking lot parking, we believe that the proposal is a reasonable one. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and obviously, David and Florence are here to answer any questions that you may want to direct to them.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. First question. It is possible to have parking onsite, but it comes at a cost, and that would be on the ground floor. It is entirely possible, given the access point at the rear of the building, that there could be parking underneath. Has that been discussed, and what are the ramifications of that on the number of units?
It has been discussed, and I think I'm going to let David address that, because I know that was examined as part of their analysis, and was rejected.
So, David Cowley, one of the owners. So yes, we did explore the parking with the architects, and we did, at great length, the underground parking, which just wasn't economically feasible, it would be a great cost to underpin the building, and to create underground parking, and I believe there was also radius concerns about being able to ramp down that, getting able to turn into a tow-trim park. And then, yes, we could park on the street level, we'll call it, but then we greatly diminished the amount of units we could have, and that would also render it nonviable economically.
Thank you.
Is there an intention to have any type of loading area to the rear, with, you know, short-term parking for an hour or two?
Unloading groceries, unloading people with limited abilities.
Has that been thought through and discussed?
Yes, that was discussed as well, and you're correct. So we would use the space at the rear of the church, as a drop-off area, and possibly for handicap access, and that's also a flat area on the property, where the Spring Street is a slope, so be able to pull in there, and a flat area and access to the church that way.
So, one or two spaces, and will there be like, any thought to a time limit, or any other type of restriction?
It would be like, park and drop-off, and...
Drop-off, okay.
Yes, yeah. And also, that's where we have to have the refuse, or trash containers as well, so that would be, that'd have to be accessible, for the truck to access that.
Okay, so, pretty much one space back there, and then access to the trash area?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the board for the applicant?
How do you think? I took a right, coming from Front Street, and took a right down the street, and to me, there was the right right before 43 Front Street. So, those buildings where it says 43 Front Street are all condominiums, or apartments now, in my humble opinion. So, right across the street, you talk about the parking going down, yet you've got apartments right across the street, and condos that have a difficulty parking. I went down the street, I did not find, this could be, I didn't find anything until you got halfway down the street by the academy that had any parking. And if it was me, I'm not going to, I don't know what goes on in any municipal parking lot if you can park overnight. I'd look into that before I say, oh, I can park, you can park in municipal parking. I don't know what the hours are, I don't know whether it's prohibited. I just think that if I'm going to pay X amount of dollars to live in this nice apartment, or condo, I'm not going to walk from the municipal parking lot, all the way up and around to get to my apartment, carrying whatever. The other question that comes in is, for four months out of the year, you can't park on the street. Am I not correct?
You can't park overnight.
Yeah. So where are all these people going to go if they're not parking overnight? That's, you know, December, January, February, and March, that's four months out of the year, that's a third. What are you going to do with them when they can't park out overnight, even on the street that they're next to? That's my question, I'm just...
Well, and a related question is, you referenced numerous times that there's a capacity for parking, and availability of various places. Is there a municipal parking study, or did the applicant prepare any type of parking
We did not prepare a parking study, and I'm unaware of a municipal parking study relative to this area. I know that there was one a number of years ago now, right for the heart of downtown, on Water Street and so forth. I'm unaware of that. However, I will say, to kind of respond to Mr. Merrill's questions, I think that what you need to bear in mind is that certainly you could have, you know, driven down Front Street and taken a right onto Spring Street, and not seen any parking, whenever it was that you were there.
There were no...
But I would suggest to you that there are going to be times, because I know I've walked around there, where the street is just empty, and so I think it really is going to vary tremendously as to whether, and when I say that somebody could walk literally right outside there, and across the street, there are, I have noted, that there are empty spaces along Spring Street, such that you could do that. As to your comments about some of the condominium buildings and so forth, in that same corner, those buildings, some of those do in fact have at least some parking onsite for those buildings. So, yes, I understand.
I agree.
So, I guess my only point is, you are correct. There are going to be times when it might be a little bit tight, in terms of finding a parking space right along the area of Front Street, or, excuse me, Spring Street, right in front of the building. However, as we've said before, it's not just limited to Spring Street. You could park along Front Street, in front of the academy, you could park along Elm Street.
Right, you have to park on the other side, right?
Yeah.
You can't park.
There is parking right in front of the church, you can park. I just want to point out that the, the issue is primarily one, that the applicant is going to have to deal with when they go to market the property, and we need to make a decision on whether we're willing to accept 24 additional parking spaces in the town itself. I believe that the applicant is going to have to have a very frank discussion amongst themselves, and with any potential investors here, whether or not you can market a condominium with no parking, whether or not it's a serious constraint, not having, as you correctly pointed out, year-round parking available. So these are not issues that concern the zoning board.
Well...
It's a financial decision that needs to be made.
I don't agree with that.
Well, we agree that the use is a good one, we've agreed that the use is a good one, that this is a structure that lends itself to residential use. The problem is that there's, it's very difficult to balance that with parking.
Mr. Chair, I absolutely agree with your comments, and I think really, this board's job, and we will have our work cut out for you, and I don't disagree with you, in trying to wrestle with those issues, but really, that's our job, that's our problem, that's our headache, not yours.
Understood.
I think in terms of what the variance criteria are, under New Hampshire law, what your focus is, or needs to be, as you've just articulated, is to look at the impact on these additional, up to 24 cars, and that would be an extraordinary circumstance, I think, in which all, you know, 11 units are going to be there.
Oh, I don't at all, all 11 units are going to be overnight, and each one of those is going to have two people, and they're going to have overnight guests, and so 24 cars is exactly right.
So, the question, the question I think for this board to contemplate, in the context of your variance criteria, is what impact that is going to have on the parking needs of the other elements of the town of Exeter. That's it.
Absolutely. Criteria number one, the basic objective of off-street parking requirements is to prevent traffic problems. I think that by putting 11 housing units in here without parking, we would be increasing...
So my concern, that Chris very rightly raised, is the overnight parking, especially during the winter months.
Correct.
Does the municipal lot allow overnight parking? I know there's a few spaces that are designated, but it's not the whole lot.
I think it's very limited, it's like five or six.
So where are these people going to park overnight?
So where are these people going to park overnight in the winter?
My understanding is you, my understanding is you apply for a permit to park overnight in the...
No, you'll get towed if you park overnight.
So that, I mean, I think there's...
In the winter.
The opportunity to flex parking amongst other uses and so forth, but the overnight winter parking is a pretty big concern.
Absolutely.
That I don't know how that's going to, where are these people going to go?
Even like the Center Street lot, which is the closest lot, has 24 spaces in it. So even if they could park there overnight in the winter, that takes up an entire municipal lot.
Is that by the telephone?
Yeah, the one next to the phone.
Or they'll cut nicely through, easily.
To, next to, where?
Behind the old, the...
Next to the phone company on Center Street.
Across from like the rectory for the church. It's a little municipal out there that not many people know about, but it is literally 24 spots. I went and counted.
You could also park down, my father's old bank, too.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, too many people talking at once, we need to control the conversation, please. Please, Mr. Eastman.
I thought you were talking about the Center Street lot, the one that's... Were you asking about this lot?
I think I was asking about this lot behind this building.
I was talking, yes, there is overnight parking, there's...
Is it the whole lot, or just a few spaces?
It's only up against the east-fully side, and it's limited to 12, 15 spaces.
Okay.
I thought you were talking about the Center Street lot, which has a total of 24 spaces, and what there is permitted overnight parking, even during a snow event or whatever.
Okay.
But it's, it's only, and I think 10 spaces out of the 24 that are allowed to park, so...
So, you know, my concern is that this will be, you know, these unit owners will be taxpayers, and they'll have nowhere to park, and it'll be a town problem, and that's why we have a parking ordinance. So I guess, you know, I'd like a little bit more of a plan about how the parking would be accommodated, and more information about what the capacity is, you know, where the lot, where the parking spaces are located, how many, and, you know, which ones are available for winter overnight parking. I feel like we just don't have the information to make an informed decision.
I mean, when it was functioning as a church, and if there were 100 people in attendance, which the church would still be in existence if there were, that would be temporary, short-term, not overnight, not in the winter.
Yeah, and if you can't park, you don't go.
We have to look 24/7.
Florence Trufner. The municipal lot behind my office in McReel Building, there's a municipal lot there, and it's overnight parking, too, and there are probably 25 spots, at least 20. Yeah, and that's overnight.
You know it better than I do.
Yeah, well, I see it every day, yeah.
It's about, I counted, there's about 20 back there.
Oh, is it 20? Okay.
Doing your homework, huh?
Thank you.
I don't know how many of those are overnight, snow parking, too, so it's...
Right. The only, the only overnight lot in the winter with proximity to this building that is open to the public is the approximately 10 spots on Center Street.
Okay.
How many spots are in the town lot, the municipal lot?
Yes.
Total?
Overnight. How many overnight spots are there?
Well, this time of the year, there's, during the summer months, and...
We have to look, talk in the minimum, what's de minimis? Is that our Latin phrase? What's the, what's the minimum? Because we have to think about it only in terms of the winter, not the summer.
Okay, so winter, I believe there was 18 space, I'm sorry, 15 spaces along the east-fully side of the parking lot in the municipal lot.
There's no freaking way, I'm sorry. There's no possible way that somebody who lives in this building is going to, going to leave their car in the municipal lot over here and walk. Just won't happen. I think we need to look...
I'm talking about how many people are downtown.
I think we need to look at the region, I think we need to look at this area, and what are the, what are the issues going to be? Not just the issues for the applicant, which are significant in terms of marketing a property that has no onsite parking whatsoever, but what is the implication for the town of having an additional 24-hour, 24 parking, vehicles parking? And we have to look at the worst-case scenario, overnight in the winter when there's restricted parking.
And I do appreciate that the previous use used up a lot of spaces, but it was not the same thing. It's, you know, short-term use, not overnight, not, you know, not, if you can't find a parking spot, you don't go to church, or you don't, whatever, you figure it out. But if you live there, you don't have that option, you need to have a place.
And the parking there, when people park in front of the Exeter Historical Society, it gets tight in there. It's, I walk there daily, and when people are parked there, even on the sidewalk, you watch your car.
And the church used some of that uses for, frankly, people who walk from downtown as well, whereas this is permanent, 24 hours, I'm moving in, I'm buying a place, I got my car.
If I understand...
You understand the issues.
If I understand, I just want to make sure I'm clear on this, the concern is really not a, that there's a fatal flaw here, it's just, at this point, you simply need more information. I think that Laura has articulated the need, or the desire to have more of a plan, and in particular, the two aspects of this that are causing the board concern are what's going to be happening in terms of overnight parking, and then what's going to be happening in terms of the winter parking.
You need to look at the worst-case scenario. You're asking us to accept 24 additional vehicles that are permanent. It's not somebody visiting Water Street Bookstore, it's somebody who wants to live here.
Right.
Where are those vehicles going to be housed in the worst-case scenario, which is winter parking ban overnight?
Right. So I would suggest, if this is acceptable to my clients, that we study the issue a little bit more and come back to this board with some more concrete information.
And if you could secure some dedicated spaces somewhere...
Well, that might be a possibility, too.
...by either lease or ownership, that would probably ease our worries a bit as well.
If there weren't 24, if there were, I know you need a certain amount of units to make your money, but if it wasn't 24, it might be easier to absorb, too. It's just that 24 is...
I understand.
The number of spaces intact doesn't seem like a lot, but permanent, it's a lot.
And you might be able to carve something out there, where you get six spaces underneath by giving up some, some of the space underneath on the, on what you call it, street level, I think, Chicago's called the street level.
I think you need to have a better engineer look at the impact of under-building parking. I've not been in that church, but most churches are pretty open on the first floor, which means the main structure isn't counting on support from the basement. Now, there are ways you can beat the ramping issues with hydraulics, there's all kinds of stuff you can do.
I think that, you know, I'll defer to my clients, but I, but I think that the, they've got a pretty good team in terms of engineering analysis and architectural analysis that's looked at that issue very carefully, but certainly, as part of our, you know, analysis of this, for the, for the issues that have been cited, we can take another look at that, but I, I don't hold up, hold up much hope on that.
I think that, I think we, I think we would appreciate more, more information before rendering a decision on this. Would you like to request an extension?
Yes, I would. When is, when is the next meeting?
Where are we, second Tuesday, Barb?
Third Tuesday.
April 19.
Is that okay?
Yes.
All right, yes, I would like to request a continuance until April 19th, and we will work very diligently to provide you with additional information.
Would somebody like to make a motion to continue the application until the meeting on April 19th?
I'll make a motion that we continue until the 19th of April.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion to continue the application of Exonian Properties?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
We'll see you in April, thank you very much for your time. Approval of minutes, February 15th. Has anyone had a chance to take a gander at them?
I do have a question.
Their usual quality.
They are that.
So the first one's staying, and then we're voting on the second one when we come back?
Correct. We voted 5-1, 4-1 aye on the use variance.
So the first one is fine?
It's been passed, and now it's strictly the parking, they're two separate.
Okay.
So the same people at that hearing would be terrific. Are you available that evening, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great. If, April, it would be great if there'd be the same five that would continue the hearing, and it's always you.
You mean be here in April?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, I'll be here.
Well, let's keep an eye on that.
At least nothing happens on April 1st.
People are always inviting me to go places, so...
Oh, are they? Well, you're just going to have to turn down the many social invitations. Are there any questions?
What if Kevin wants to come back and lead the parade? You're going to just tell him to stay away?
I'll just, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
On this application?
On this application only, he can run the rest of the show. Are there any questions regarding the minutes on the February 15th?
I move we accept the minutes as prepared.
Second.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't find anything, did anybody else find anything? I think we'd have heard by now if we did.
Yeah.
You may or may not have read them. Mr. Prior, Ms. Olson-Murphy, Mr. Thielber, Mr. Davies, and Mr. Merrill will vote. All in favor of accepting the minutes of February 15th?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Minutes are good, 5-0.
I think you voted twice.
I think I did, too. Motion to adjourn.
I was just pretending to be a pirate, though.
Motion.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.